All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a joint meeting of the Anchorage Assembly and Anchorage School Board. We are noticed today, March 8th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And I know others like myself probably have community councils to go to right at 7 o'clock. So I'll make sure that we end on time today. Thanks, everyone, for joining us virtually for this joint meeting. Let's go ahead and do a roll call, please. We'll start with the Assembly members, and then we'll go to school board members.
Thank you, Chair Rivera.
Present.
Vice Chair Weddleton. Ms. Allard. Mr. Constant.
Here.
Mr. Dunbar.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Ms. LaFrance.
Here.
Mr. Perez Vedia. Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Ms. Zalatell.
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and do a roll call for school board members, please.
Sure, President Vicalis. She may still be having some issues getting connected, but she is, she'll join us as soon as she can. Vice President Bellamy.
Present.
Member Donley. Member Hildy. Member Hildy is also having some trouble connecting. She was on the attendee side, so she either may be on the attendee side or join us when she can on this, on the participant side. Member Holloman. Member Marsette.
Here.
And Member Mitchell. Member Mitchell is also having some issues joining, but she will join us as soon as she can.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and start with the pledge of allegiance. School Board Member Bellamy, if you could please lead us in the pledge.
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Next, if I could have Assemblymember Zalatell, please read the land acknowledgement.
My pleasure, Mr. Chair. A land acknowledgement is a formal statement recognizing the indigenous people of a place. It is a public gesture of appreciation for the past and present indigenous stewardship of the lands that we now occupy. It is an actionable statement that marks our collective movement towards decolonization and equity. The Anchorage Assembly would like to acknowledge that we gather today on the traditional lands of the Denina Athabaskans. For thousands of years, the Denina have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. It is with gratefulness and respect that we recognize the contributions, innovations, and contemporary perspectives of the upper Cookinlet Denina.
Great, thank you, Members Zalatell. Just want to note for the record, we have been joined by School Board Member Hildy and Assemblymember Perez Vedia. And I thank you two for joining us. Okay, next, we're gonna do minutes of previous joint meeting. So we have the joint meeting of December 7th, 2020. If I can go ahead and get a motion to approve those minutes.
Moved or approved?
Second, Zalatell.
Okay, moved, Member Peterson, second, Member Zalatell. Is there any discussion on the meeting minutes of December 7th? Okay, seeing and hearing none, is there any opposition to approval of those minutes? Seeing and hearing no opposition, those minutes are approved. Next, we will go to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second, Constant.
Okay, so moved by Member Peterson, seconded by Member Constant. I understand that there are a couple of items Members would like to add. We'll start with you, Mr. Constant.
Yeah, the only item that I was hoping that we would add was a discussion about the school lunch plans for returning to school.
Great, thank you. So we'll go ahead and add that as a B under other items. And then I also had one item to add, which is a discussion of a possible joint work session on CDC guidance for schools. Wanted to see if that is of interest to the body. So unless there's opposition, I will add that as a C, point C, under other matters of mutual concern. Are there any other agenda items? I believe there is one from the School Board Member, I believe it was, Member Marsette.
Actually, I'm gonna get a written report on that.
Okay, great, all right, then we'll... Excuse me, thank you, we'll go ahead and leave that off the agenda for today, then. Are there any other additions or edits to the agenda? Is there any opposition to approval of the agenda as amended? Okay, seeing none, then the agenda is approved as amended. Also want to note for the record, we've been joined by Assemblymember Weddleton. Thank you for joining us, Member Weddleton. Okay, next, we have initial audience participation. So Clerk's Office, do we have anyone signed up for initial audience participation?
Excuse me, Chair Rivera, this is Assemblywoman Allard, I'm in the meeting too.
Okay, great, thank you. So I'll note for the record, we've been joined by Assemblymember Allard. Okay, so going back to the Clerk's Office, are there any, anyone signed up for initial audience participation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Mr. Eugene Carl Haberman, who signed up for initial audience participation. We do see him on the line, so we can unmute him.
Great, let's go ahead and do that, please. Welcome, Mr. Haberman, if you can go ahead, introduce yourself, and you will have three minutes.
I signed up for the final one, I didn't sign up for the first one.
Okay, then, if you would like to be in the final, then we can go ahead and do that. Clerk's Office staff, do we have anyone else signed up for the initial audience participation?
No, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move on in our agenda to financial planning. So we have one item under here, annual operating budget of the Anchorage School District for its fiscal year 2021, 2022. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to the administration, to the School District Administration for the presentation.
Thank you. Member Bellamy, would you like to say a few words before we begin in President Vicalis's absence?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Bishop. I'd just like to thank the Assembly for their time today. And with, for this item, for this particular item, Dr. Bishop and her staff will be presenting, and Board members will be available to answer questions at the end. So I now turn it over to Dr. Bishop and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Bellamy. I'm presenting with me today...
I see your microphones off, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Donley, I can hear you, thank you. We are now, now we're returning it over to Dr. Bishop, can you hear?
Thank you. This evening's presentation is going to be presented by our Senior Director of OMB, Andy Ratliff. And so we do have a PowerPoint, if we can pull that up, please.
And before you continue, Dr. Bishop, I do just want to note for the record that School Board Member Mitchell is on the attendee side, so she is able to listen in but not able to participate. And then want to note, we have been joined by School Board Member Donley, thank you.
Ms. Grant, do you have the PowerPoint, or does Mr. Ratliff?
Dr. Bishop, I believe that Andy does, but I'm just getting that pulled up, just in case.
And I could pull it up as well, too.
Please do, and then we'll start.
Can we see that?
There we have it. Members of the Assembly and School Board, we're going to just share with you our proposed preliminary budget. This was passed by the School Board and is sitting at the Assembly. Now, I do believe that tomorrow is the first time it'll be seen and heard on your agenda. Next slide. This is just a review of the budget development process, all the way from July, which is the beginning of the fiscal year. We presented the pro forma budget. Also, we just have our projected budget development. We provided that to the Board in February. It goes through changes according to Board feedback, as well as the community moving forward. Of note is up there at the top of April, Andy will share with you just our uncertainty of trend data in this time of the pandemic in regard to our enrollment. So we will be doing a community-wide enrollment survey in April to shore up our numbers for enrollment. As you know, the base student allocation is provided on the adjusted average daily membership of students enrolled in those 20 days, the first 20 days of October. So as the state legislative budget development occurs down in Juneau, if there's any changes, we look to a revised budget, bringing forward to the Board this summer. But otherwise, we have a balanced budget to present to you today. And the budget is made up of the Board goals. And you may know, and many of you participated in establishing the Board goals over the last, really, year and a half. And this was led by a Member Marsette as the President of the Board at the time, and she carries through these duties till today. And the three primary goals that the Board has, and again, our goals are built around what we expect students to know and be able to do. So the Board goals are specifically focused on students. Of course, we have a lofty goal for reading proficiency to increase from 40% of our population to 80% by May of 2026. Math proficiency, while that doesn't look as grand, it is certainly a high goal. And that number 50 is actually 40, so we don't have the correct PowerPoint in front of you. That was a typo there, right, where the cursor is. But then we have life, college, and career readiness. So beginning with the freshman year in September 2020, the percentage of high school students' life and college ready. And we have quite a few interim goals that supports these primary goals. We also have guardrails for which the Board, in really taking input from the community, both internal and external stakeholders. If we look at the goals as the vision of the Board, the guardrails, rather, could really be looked at as the values of the community. So they're sharing the values of the community in guardrails. And it really gives the parameters, if you will, of the expectations of how the work can get done. And these are the guardrails, and I'd like to read them out loud, just for the record, because I think that they are quite valuable. The superintendent will not leave student groups underrepresented in lottery application-based programs, and that's our reach towards equity in our district. Also, the superintendent will not operate without a diverse or culturally responsive workforce. And the superintendent will not allow unsatisfactory employee performance to go unidentified or unaddressed. And finally, the superintendent will not operate elementary schools without mental health services. So while we have those aspirational goals of what we want children to know and be able to do, we also want a district that includes these guardrails. In the preliminary budget, it addresses primarily lots of things, of course. It's a very large budget, as you know. With, we are one of the 100th largest school districts in the nation, lots of employees. But this budget that we'll be presenting to you, it does address a $28 million general fund deficit. And this was due to the pro forma. So if we took just the average growth of programs and contracts, as well as just building in the needs for our kids and learning moving forward, the pro forma demonstrated $28 million deficit. It does, however, use S R 2 funds. And if you know, this week, the additional funds were passed. But these were the S R 2 funds that were utilized, and the district received a little over $50 million. It uses approximately 80% of those funds in this first year. It redirects resources to focus on School Board goals. And it provides a redesign of educational supports to focus on the learning outcomes and gaps that we must close, avoids large-scale reduction in force or any kind of a rip. And it is metrics-based in the reductions that we do have. Again, you will see some reduction because of enrollment. And we've kept our pupil-teacher ratios very, they're, we've kept them the same. However, if we had to drop an enrollment, that would call for some reduction or even a move of staffing to an additional building or a different site, depending on the enrollment trends. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Andy Ratliff to really begin talking about the enrollment and the summary of the funding.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So kind of a high-level enrollment and funding summary for our FY '22 projections, we are looking at about, again, a little over 45,000 ADM, which is fairly close to our enrollment, although it's not exact. Enrollment is typically a little bit more than what our average daily membership is, based on part-time students and kindergartners, if they were going half-time. We did have 41,337 in FY '21. That was predominantly a combination of losses in neighborhood schools and an increase in correspondence. For FY '22, we're expecting the correspondence students to remain, and then a lot of the students that left the district, either private schools or statewide correspondence. So we're projecting about 75% of those students to return. So we do have, our ADM for FY '22 is pretty close to what we actually projected originally had in our FY '21 budget. Our intensive needs projection is about 1,025, and that's identical to what we reported in FY '20. We only had 949 in FY '21 due to a lot of, you know, as I mentioned, a lot of the students went to private schools or statewide correspondence. But then we also had inability to test students and get them certified as intensive needs throughout the course of the year, just because, you know, we don't have that face-to-face interaction for much of the time. Our revenue is projected at 565 million, a little over 10 million, less than what we had budgeted in FY '21. Partly losses in state revenue and partly losses in, or not having fund balance to use for FY '22. The ESR 2 grant provides $50 million to reopen K-12 schools. And we really did put a lot of that money into reopening those schools and use it as it's intended as stimulus. So we want to keep paying our employees and keep those dollars going back into our economy. There's a lot of variables that could require us to revise this budget going forward, as Dr. Bishop mentioned. Part of its lack of historical data to confidently project what our FY '22 enrollment's gonna be. So when schools start to get, or open up to secondary schools, and we have people feeling more comfortable coming back, we'll do a survey to try to get a better picture of what that enrollment might be, and then do a revised budget if that, if that actually materializes. The ESR 3, which passed the Senate and back to the House, I guess, this, today, provides additional resources, could provide additional resources beyond FY '22. However, we don't really know what those are. And then, if there's any legislative, state or local changes for FY '22 funding, that would require a budget as well. Here's a snapshot of our FY '22 projected general fund revenue. The big change is on here is about a $4.1 million increase in local property taxes, and then the $5.6 million foundation funding decrease. $4.4 million of that switch between foundation funding and property taxes, and the increase in property taxes is due to the required local contribution going up. From calendar year 2019 to calendar year 20, there was about a 4% increase in the property values within the Anchorage municipality, which contributed to this increase in the required local contribution. And like I said, it's about $4.4 million, and then about a $300,000 reduction due to lower projected enrollment than we had for FY '21. And FY '21, again, this is on the adopted budget, not necessarily what our actual experience was. The $8.3 million in fund balance, like I said, we didn't, we aren't planning on using any sort of fund balance. We anticipate having a drop in interest earnings, just based on our mark-to-market approach. And then the last thing on our revenue I'd like to mention is about our Impact Aid. There was some federal legislation that allows us to use our FY '20 student counts to be able to do our FY '22 Impact Aid application, which we saw a pretty significant loss of students on base. So this number would have been considerably lower had that legislation not passed. But since we're using the same counts, the dollars ought to be pretty comparable to what they were in the prior year. So overall, about $10.5 million general fund loss in revenue for FY '22.
All right, this next slide just really gives you, as well as provided the Board, a picture of the administrative's work in providing and carrying through the strategic plan. It is a multi-dimensional plan with many different stakeholders, but we are using project management to move forward with our actions. On the next slide, it really shares a little bit about the district inputs for the reading, math, life, college-ready, and career, and guardrails. Part of our passing of the budget was really to demonstrate that the budget was built around the Board's goals and guardrails, what our community's vision and values were. Another big input is, that I want to bring your attention to specifically, because it's really occurring in this fiscal year, as well as next, is the additional funds to summer school. The Anchorage School District is providing a robust, open, very large summer school for many different students, it's in the planning stages now. And it's really for what we're labeling as unfinished learning. But it is also really going to focus on the arts and other school inputs that we feel our students missed during this pandemic. So just wanted to share a little bit about that as well. But we can get into these in more detail, but these are essentially some of the actions that will occur to build capacity in our school district around meeting those goals.
So this slide shows a snapshot of our general fund expenditures by state function. The brown bars are items that are directly allow students to, or schools to operate. Instruction, special education instruction, operations of maintenance and plants, or operations and maintenance of plant. These things really, while not within the state's definition of instruction, the operations and maintenance of plant, that's the utilities, the custodian, the maintenance that allows schools to stay open. So about 97% of our district's operational revenue is going into the school buildings. The blue bars, the district admin support, is things like payroll accounting, HR budget. And then the district administration, the smaller blue bar, is School Board Superintendent and some of the other executive-level positions. But by and large, most of these positions are, or most of our costs go directly into the school buildings. The information at the bottom, about 86% of our, of our revenue goes towards salary and benefits in the general fund. So anytime we need to make reductions, generally, that's where the, what the reduction has to come from, is people. These other ones are, for the most part, fixed costs, and we don't have a whole lot of opportunity to be able to reduce those costs with utilities, rent, things like that. This slide shows us PTR snapshot for all levels. The top part is the general fund only. As Dr. Bishop mentioned, we had added four PTR to all grade levels to be able to balance the general fund budget. We use that for, we use the ESR 2 money to be able to bring that PTR back down so we could maintain the present class size. And as you know, this PTR, it's not a, it's not a budget formula, it's just a budgeting formula to assign staff based on where we project the students to be, but it's not a class size or a class cap. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at those. When you see a 20, a first grade of 22, it doesn't necessarily mean every class will have 22 in it. We do use a series of metrics for staff allocations at the various levels. For elementary schools, our standard is one librarian, one nurse, and a kindergarten TA for every kindergarten class, as well as two office administrators and a BPO. But they're a guide, I mean, some of those can, site factors may change, final authorizations at each school, depending on some program-specific things that go inside the schools. Really, the only changes that we made in staffing were the 38.5 FTE teachers that we reduced due to enrollment. And we also added back some planning time, but it was really the enrollments for, that we're projecting to lose between FY '21 and '22 that contributed to the loss in staff and PTR. For middle schools, we have a little bit more refined metrics on the number of principals and counselors and security. There's really not many changes in middle schools either, about five teacher reductions due to enrollment. For high schools, again, the same thing, it's, you can see the same metrics up at the top. They are a guide, we did add a principal at South and reduce a counselor based on programmatic need in there, and reduced about three and a half teachers due to enrollment. Alternative schools, these are more, these are budgeted more based on the needs of the programs, and every year we see some shift as those programs get refined. For instance, Benny Benson Secondary School, we combined Aveil into that school, and we combined Crossroads the year before into Benson. So you can see us trying to catch up and get these out, budget allocations right as we're consolidating these programs and moving things around. The same with King Tech and AMCS. As those programs became housed under one administrator at King Tech, we started just getting the budgeting right, where we're having the same amount, one budget. We have a head principal overseeing King Tech and AMCS, then an assistant principal. So they're budgeted 50% in each one, so that's why you see those. But we did, you see more changes within the alternative schools, just based on the programmatic need. So school-based changes for next year, you can see...
Before you continue, I have a couple of questions. First, I want to just see if School Board Member Mitchell, did you have a question? And it actually looks like School Board Member Mitchell may be on the public side, which has a little bit of a lag. So I will go back to you, School Board Member Mitchell, and I will move on to Assemblymembers Zalatell.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair, I have two questions. One is, there any Title I considerations on classroom sizes and staff allocations? Just by virtue of those particular designations? And then on this slide that we happen to be on, if I'm understanding, the top box there, metric, is that just kind of the starting point, then, for each one of these particular schools? So counselors would be one counselor per 300. So counselors would be one counselor per 300 students? Am I reading that right?
Yes, through the chair to members Alatell. Yes, that is correct. So the established metric is at the top of each of these. And then for different needs, additional staff are added. We do not include the title allocations that go directly to the schools. They'll add those on top of these. But in addition, we have held teachers back and based on need and especially in meeting the board goals, we'll assign additional teaching staff to the places that we can meet the outcomes for those equity of outcomes. So the answer is yes. Have they been allocated at this point? Not, not at this point in time, no. But we have reserved staffing to be able to really target the needs of the school district and the needs of students and their learning.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, members all. I don't see any other questions. It looks like school board member Mitchell did not have a question. So let's continue. You please.
Thank you. So to look through our school-based challenges or changes for next year, this is really kind of the aggregated thing across all instruction or schools. You can see the 48.4 teacher reductions due to lower enrollment. And then this big one, this 235, this is the the one, the four PTR adjustment that we moved into the ESR two grant. And we did add back this metric-based programmatic teacher additions. This includes 14 FTE for planning time to make sure that we have coverage for the self-contained special education classrooms, as well as the 30 FTE that, as you recall, we put 30 FTE for health teachers into the CARES Act grant for FY21. We moved those back into the general pool before we made the PTR adjustment for FY22. So we do have that, the staff that we put in the CARES Act back into the general fund and then made that adjustment on the PTR section afterwards. We have staff included to open anticipation of Eagle River Elementary and Gruning Middle School opening. Those are, that's one of the other big allocations as we anticipate those coming online this fall. There was some principal and nursing staff and custodial staff that needed to come on to be able to operate those schools. The other big one you see in change in terms of total FTE is this metric-based counselor, TA, clerical and library. By and large, this is elementary school teachers assistance. So as we expect fewer students, we, we didn't budget as many TAs. But if those classes become, if we do have enough classes to be able to add those back, we certainly will. Because that, again, that's our standard to have one TA per candy classroom. Then, as I mentioned, the principal at South, we did add a dual enrollment coordinator to Alaska Middle College. Previously, I believe this position was paid for by UAA and was very valuable for our students. And that position, I believe, was actually cut by UAA. So we've added it or a like position into the Anchorage School District to be able to facilitate the concurrent enrollment between UAA and ASD. We did have some virtual program changes. And then the charter schools, the 11.21 FTE for charter schools and 6.7 million. That is predominantly based or due to increased student enrollments in frontier and family charter schools. So that money's gone to the the correspondence programs rather than the neighborhood programs. The neighborhood programs, charter programs really stayed pretty consistent with FY21, but the other ones grew quite a bit. So you'll see that reflection here. Not a whole lot in the way of special services changes for next year, which special services we classify as special education, ELL, which is English language learners and gifted. So those positions are, the biggest change here was the 10.4 positions that we added back for preschool teachers assistance, teachers and some clerical staff. We had actually made these changes in FY20 when the state did not provide us the the amount that we were expecting for the preschool grant. But we recognized the value in having these preschool programs and we were able to fund that out of the general fund. But we are needing, we are adding that to the FY22 budget. So you will see not necessarily a change in the number of classes we have this year, but from a budget-to-budget perspective, it is a change. Aside from that, we do have some pretty small items on this list, but we want to make sure that it ties out to our budget book. So if you see this minus 0.38 for $1,000, it really is just so the FTE and the cost will tie out to what we produce in our budget book. And even here, like to reclass special schools TAs into ELLTA. So as those move to different account codes and different organization codes, just to recognize that that actually, that happened and we can tie it back to our budget book. Not a whole lot of district-wide changes. The biggest ones were some of the, some of the things, the big, the big outliers that's produced, teaching and learning substitutes and addenda based on the training schedule for a, I believe it's a math adoption that they're going through. The PD portion of it will go in the way next year, but we do need to, we put in more money to make sure we have the supplies that are necessary to buy the textbooks and the consumable materials for that math adoption. Secondary CTE services, we recognize the value in our CTE services, so we have an increase there. Some of it's transportation and computers to be able to have those, get those students online. IT, while we see an increase in, to people, we do have a reduction in costs primarily because of the way that our, our contracts are structured with regards to when we buy our software. Those are the big outliers, the changes to attrition. So we did reduce the amount we expect to capture on attrition and we had insurance increases. So those were just kind of the aggregate amount of this district-wide pool of costs that we have and estimates that, we estimate that going down by about $700,000. And then the other big one is the transportation fund deficit. We do, we did anticipate a $1.8 million transfer to the transportation fund to be able to get students from home to school.
All right, we've seen this slide before and this again just summarizes what the preliminary budget has done. Big, big, big ideas in there and we are, can take any questions. The next slide generally just shares kind of the stair step of our next steps. The budget approval will shore up our enrollment, revise the budget as needed and of course, implement the strategic plan, meeting the needs of the Anchorage School District students. And Chair Rivera, we completed. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer.
Fantastic. Thank you much to the both of you for the presentation. I'll go ahead and start going through the queue. So if either school board or assembly members have questions, please put your, put yourself in the queue in the chat. So I'll go ahead and start with Assembly Member Zalatell.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions, please. The first is with regard to the summer school program. Was that something that's made possible for summer 2021 due to COVID-related funding the district's received and is choosing to use it to kind of bolster education based on kind of what's occurred in the past year? I guess, and then the second question or topic, and if it's going to come up later, we can certainly talk about it later, but this issue of school bond debt reimbursement, that's really been weighing on our minds. And in the paperwork we've received on the school district's budget, the contribution needed for FY21 is significant and will be costly to taxpayers. And I just wanted to learn either from you, Dr. Bishop, or our board members, any sense or advocacy happening at the state level that that might be undone or actually done and that that promise is kept? Or if we are really looking at having to pass that cost along and hope for the best for FY22? Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair to members Alatell. So the summer school is a yes. It's actually not solely funded by SRR two and monies. It is actually, we keep a portion in our budget. But this last year, we did, last summer, we did about four times the amount of summer school programming. And we're looking at really enlarging that and having a district-wide elementary as well as secondary onsite and a blended hybrid model if families choose and offering a choice. What we've seen with our children coming back is really this, what we call unfinished learning and just the ability not to learn to the highest levels. So knowing that we can plug some of those gaps early is really a goal of ours in addition to what we've traditionally done, which is credit recovery to be sure that kids are on track to graduate just with their credits. We have found, though, that there are large gaps in their learning. So rather than just simply looking at course to course, we're really taking a broader look and really identifying the gaps in the learning that would keep kids being successful in the future years as they matriculate in our system. If you think about it, each year provides a guide, you know, learning for a good base to be successful the next year. And if they miss some of that and we don't adjust, are the students that really learned at home a lot through this pandemic who haven't been successful, some have been, but those that haven't, this could affect them for generationally. So we are combining the originally budgeted funds for June and coupling them with additional SRR funds. But it is going to be a very robust summer school utilizing the SRR funds for that learning loss is what the technical language that is written in the bill for the funding from the federal government is about learning loss. We don't want to say we didn't lose it because we really never got it yet. So we're still providing it and it's just unfinished learning to us. And as far as the bond debt reimbursement.
Actually, is it possible to ask a quick follow-up on that just before we switch topics? I just wanted to ask if there'll be transportation contemplated for that summer school program? I know that's always a concern.
Through the chair to members Zalatell, absolutely, we are considering. It will not be more of a neighborhood pickup, but we are designing now with our transportation really across city because of the locations isn't going to be in every school, really transit sites and figuring out how best to move students to receive services. The high school students, we look to utilize the public transportation system in our city and that has always been successful in previous years. But for elementary and middle school students, absolutely. It will not be robust as the regular school year. You know, there isn't additional transportation funds, but we are utilizing the SRR two funds to come up with a good plan. We can share that one. It's in the design phase right now. The second question was in regard to the bond debt reimbursement and Andy Ratliff may want to comment or a board member. But presently, there is a 50% bond debt reimbursement placed in the governor's budget at this point in time. I have not seen that removed from the legislature at this time. But if anyone else would like to comment on that, that's one, too, that we're continuing to watch, members Zalatell.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to address that as well. We did put in our request to the city 37.8 million into to pay for the bond debt reimbursement of the state, the governor vetoed last summer for the FY21 state budget. I don't know that there's been any, any real talk about going back and providing a supplemental budget for FY21 from the state to be able to pay that bond debt. But it is based on last year, the FY21 budget and not necessarily on what's proposed for the FY22. So we've been operating in kind of a year lag or so for our bond debt as the, as we figure out what the amount the state's going to support, we'll come back and we ask for that the next, the following spring, once their, once their budget's done. So for that, our FY22 budget, we have included 100% debt reimbursement in our tax request. And if that doesn't come through, then we'll ask for that on the calendar year 22 tax request next year, if, if that addresses your question.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you, members Zalatell for the questions and the school district administration for the responses. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the 2021, 2022 fiscal year budget for the school district?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Assembly member Constance.
Yeah, just briefly, what's the process? How many meetings? What's the plan? For passage? Do we just have this public hearing and that's it?
Yes, currently, I'll go ahead and answer that because I think that was a question directed to me. So yes, the item is up before us tomorrow for a public hearing and a possible vote. Per the code, we do have to get this, the budget passed by the end of the month, although I understand there may be a little bit of wiggle room. But that is something attorneys can speak to if they would like. So there is a potential, if, if this, if the assembly does not feel comfortable passing the budget tomorrow, the preliminary budget, then we could postpone it to either the second meeting or another special meeting by the end of the month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assembly member LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to the school district administration for your work putting this together and for just getting through a generally challenging year. Appreciate all your efforts. And I just wanted, just by way of clarification, the reduced amount concerning the base student allocation is based on the assumption or the calculation that 75% of those students who left the district or went to correspondence schools will return. Is that correct? Thanks.
Thank you. Through the chair to member LaFrance. That is correct. And what we're really seeing and what our, our correspondence schools grew internally as well. And what we believe and what they've shared with us is that they believe a lot of the students that they picked up will go back to neighborhood schools or, you know, our special mission schools, schools from which they, they transferred and that a lot of students who selected out of district correspondence might move back into those homeschool correspondence that are run by charters. But other than that, we just looked at about the transition of program to program, a generally about a 25% continued loss of students.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, member LaFrance. School board member Marset?
Yes, I just wanted to kind of point this out. I think sometimes it gets lost. But, you know, we did mention that there was a $28 million deficit. And if you look at that chart there, we're actually funding 235 of our teachers through our SRR funds to make up for that deficit. So, you know, we're not going to have that one-time money always and we're kicking the can down the road. But our budget, our CFO, they did a great job of balancing this budget with what we had. But I just wasn't sure if that was clear and I want to make sure that the assembly members knew that technically we're using funds to operate our classrooms, the SRR two funds, which we can do.
Great, thank you for that clarification, member Marset. All right, not seeing any other questions, then we will have the public hearing and the regular assembly meeting tomorrow. The, as I stated earlier in response to member Constance's question, the assembly does have the flexibility to postpone our approval of that preliminary budget to the end of the month. So that, that is a discussion we will have as a body tomorrow. But for now, thanks everyone for the presentation. So we'll go ahead and move on in our agenda to item six on our agenda, capital improvement needs. Anchorage School District Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2027. I'll turn it over to the school district administration for the presentation.
All right, thank you, Chair Rivera. Madam Vice President of the Board, Margot Bellamy, would you like to say any words before we turn it over on this item?
Actually, I think we're.
Actually, I think we're, we're just on track to have you and staff continue with this portion on our capital improvement, our six-year capital improvement plan.
Excellent. Thank you, Member Bellamy. I do want to share with everyone that we provided with your budget books, I don't know if my, it's making, it's a capital improvement plan spiral book that we provided to the Assembly members with the six-year CIP plan. And we have Tom Fenicev here who leads our capital improvement division. And so I'll turn it over to Tom, CPNC, Senior Director.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. So I just, you've all got the capital improvement plan and had a chance to look over it. So I kind of, I'm going to do just a brief overview of it and then I'd like to open it up to your questions. So basically, it's the same submission as last year with the additional, with the addition of 2026. So we're looking at $309 million worth of projects over the six, over the next six years. This affects over 40 schools, including seven major projects. Many of the building improvements include roof replacements, HVAC, efforts to improve seismic resiliency, safety and security. You'll also notice that we've moved to a two-year bond cycle and we look forward to continuing that more efficient approach. The capital improvement plan also follows board guidance where we're seeking to keep bond amounts under or at debt retirement and with an average of about 50% of that investment going towards deferred requirements. In 2026, we have Bartlett and Whaley Planning Design. Both these are somewhat larger projects and they include roof replacement, exterior windows, ventilation upgrades, restroom upgrades, all designed to make the building more efficient and better serve the educational programs involved. So with that brief overview, I can, if you don't have it in front of you, I can pull up the CIP Table 1, which covers all that I kind of talked about it. And I'd like to open it up to your questions.
Great. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and invite members to put themselves in the queue if they have any questions, comments or discussion.
And Chair Rivera, George Vekelis is also online as part of our team supporting Tom Fenicev. I believe he's in the queue as well.
Okay, sure. If, Mr. Vekelis, if you'd like to share anything, go ahead.
No, I think Tom called it pretty well, but we're just waiting for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, so I have a couple of questions to start. First, Assembly Member Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have the document right in front of me, but I looked at it earlier and there were a couple of things that kind of occurred to me to ask questions about. One was in regard to kind of a continuing thought, it looked like, that there were going to be certain areas of the community that were going to be increasing in student numbers. And I wondered really how some of those projections are marrying up with some of the comments that we're hearing about how we're losing people in the municipality of Anchorage. So I just kind of wondered in terms of the demographics, you know, how recent some of those projections really are and considering the fact that we lost about 4,000 students this year, we think we've lost several thousand people just in the community at large. So just trying to kind of get a sense of how those particular instances might be weighing in and having an impact on how the capital improvement plan is really, how the numbers are being used in that plan. Thanks.
Tom, do you want me to answer that one?
You can do that. If there's any specifics, I'll chime in too.
So as you know, you know, we've been out of school probably most of the year and it's just been recent that, you know, we've had the elementary kids in. And then, as you know, right after spring break, the week of the 15th, the secondary will start. It's probably a little premature to try to figure out exactly what the head counts are going to look like. We're anticipating that some of the kids will stay in the current programs at Durin since the schools have been closed until the end of the year. However, in September, when we start our head counts as directed by the Department of Education, that will give us a better idea as to exactly what our population will look like as far as students. And then at that point in time, you know, the School Board as well as the administration will look at it and then determine what's best overall and what moves to make. And there's different tools in the toolbox to use to be able to handle that. Does that answer your question, Ms. Kennedy?
Well, thank you, Mr. Vekelis. A little bit, like I said, I just noticed that it looked like there was information that certain areas of the municipality were actually going to be growing versus other areas. And so it was kind of a little bit more specific to kind of where, where the populations are going, where are they moving to, where are they moving away from? And I just kind of wondered what you use to base some of that information on. And maybe, you know, obviously I know it all ties in at some point to what the population looks like year to year and you have to adjust accordingly, but I just, it looked to me like some of the plans for future projects were based on this idea of knowing or at least projecting where the community was going to grow and where it wasn't.
That's, that's correct. And Tom, you want to cover the two things that we use for research?
Well, yes. First of all, we work very closely with the municipality's planning department. We're tied into the 2040 plan. So we, in many ways, we're tracking the same growth projections that they are. So we work very closely with them. Also, in terms of addressing different enrollments throughout the districts, the, the School Board and the administration has a, an assortment of tools to address those. Some of the easiest and most cost-effective means are moving or changing programs. There's adjusting school boundaries. And then lastly, we can look at closure or combining schools.
And through the Chair to Member Kennedy, something to note is that this year, the School Board is passed a boundary, a determined time every 10 years after the census, that boundaries will be considered and planning made. So that is going to be incorporated into future plans as well, just for an insight into some of the changes coming.
Thank you. That does help. And actually, Mr. Chair, that leads me to my second question, if, if I may continue or I'm happy to go back in the queue, either one.
Go ahead, Member Kennedy.
Thank you. Just in regard to the comment you made about boundary, Dr. Bishop, I've always been curious about when the district might come up with a plan for when to close down schools. So this is a little bit of a policy call and, you know, I always recognized how difficult it would be to come to that decision. And so I just wondered if there was any more discussion about at what point, including the fact that you have to look at these new demographics after this 10-year census, when or will the Anchorage School District come up with kind of a preliminary plan or some kind of a guideline about when to actually, when the need arises to actually close a school? Thanks.
Thank you. Through the Assembly Chair to Member Kennedy, that's a great question and we ask ourselves honestly that every year. And in the last five years, the School Board has shut down two schools, specifically Mount Spur, and the students were sent to three different schools as well as Mount Eliamna. And the students attending that school moved into the city into four different schools. In addition to some of the changes, what we're doing now is combining programs. And from your time on the school district, you probably know that we had a lot of rental space as well. So rather than renting space, what we've done is some of the changes as of late, the last few years, Padaya is now located in Central. Two schools are located in one. Crossroads Program School as well as Avail School that had, Avail was about 200 students are now located in Benny Benson. And the final one that we did just last year, this was the first year that took place, so it was kind of odd because it was pandemic year, but we had space for Alaska Middle College that we paid for at the university and we, because of being co-located, King Tech now houses the middle college for the students on the high school side. And of course, they would go to the college on the college side. So we continue to look at not only closing schools, but looking at space availability. One thing we, we want to share is that we made a temporary, but it could be a temporary long-term move of the Alaska Native Charter, Charter School, Cultural Charter School into East High School. That move was, is actually presently being made. We had a school blessing last week by the elders. The landlord just wasn't taking care of it. We were not comfortable with having multiple students back with the airflow in the building. And so we have now relocated in the Benson Wing of East, Betty Davis East Anchorage High School is now housing the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. So I wouldn't say that there's a point in time, I would say it's consistent, but certainly our enrollment will tell what the future looks like in schools. One of the things that is changing as well in his enrollment, there's a bill that Senator Begich has now to really support pre-K. And so not that all students in the city would be educated pre-K, it would be for those that need access to pre-K that don't have it elsewhere and the district can, can begin some programs. And so space now in many of our schools, over the last five years, we've increased our pre-K programs. We added 16 different classrooms over the last five years for pre-K. And if Senator Begich's bill is supported, that could also affect space in schools. So always a moving target, but always on the table to consider. And one last piece, I know this is long, but the state legislature did pass a provision to allow for a smart scale-down, if you will, in regard to funding given students because that was always something, because the, the funding formula has a school base as part of the funding and they provided just smart closures, funding for that, if you will, about three years ago. Thank you for the questions.
Great. Well, thank you for the answers. That's really helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member Kennedy. Assembly Member Zalatell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have two questions. One, in looking at the CIP table and how it's spaced out with the two-year bonds, I'm just curious if that is delaying any of the projects because it's on a two-year cycle, whereas if it was on an every-year cycle, some of those projects may have been realized sooner, particularly the Abbott Loop Elementary School construction. That's been a concern in the Midtown District for a long time and I believe right now it doesn't make it until 2024, so the second two-year bond cycle in the CIP. Also, I believe I heard that you're trying to bond for an almost equal amount to the debt being retired and I guess, I'm still stuck on the school bond debt reimbursement issue because it's just such a big one. Could you talk a little bit, you know, when the state or if the state doesn't come through with school bond debt reimbursement funds and we have to tax to make up the difference? You know, right now, it's a request in with the school district's budget, but they're two separate line items. Could you provide some context about how the district views school bond debt and that reimbursement piece as either a part of its budget or separate from its budget and, you know, kind of what, what it means? Because I think we're going to have to be explaining it to residents why taxes may be increasing rather significantly as to school bond debt reimbursement. And then I want to be able to put that in the context of the two-year bonding because those are large bond amounts, but equal to what it would have been if I understand it all correctly. So a little bit of a loop there, but just really the timing of the capital projects, are they really getting delayed or are they on track as they would have been otherwise? And just some more context about bond debt and how that all works so we can be talking with residents leading up to the setting of the mill rate in April.
Thank you. And I will ask Mr. Vekelis or Mr. Fenicev to speak on the two-year and the projects, really, and then Mr. Ratliff can come on and, and share any information in regard to the capital and operations. And through the Chair to Members Zalatell, you're, you're absolutely correct. They are two funding, two different budgets, so I can understand, but yet our entire city, we're, you know, responsible for education. So I see that point.
Yes, so I can answer that question through the Chair to Member Zalatell. So on CIP Table 1, you'll see at the top, there's the targeted capital investment, projected bond amount and anticipated debt retirement. The targeted capital investment is a combination of those two years. So you can see as part of the, the School Board's guidance, we have budgeted or assembled our, our program for each bond year, so it either meets or is below the targeted investment or, or the projected or the anticipated debt retirement. And that goes out through 2026. We don't really know at that point, so our targeted capital investment is around 100 million. So that is how the capital investment program and how we go about adjusting our bond amounts to meet those. In terms of the, the two-year cycle, most of our capital projects take overall about four years to complete. So it doesn't delay our projects at all. It just gives us more time. We incorporate funding for planning, so we, and that occurs early on with most of them, you'll see planning and design upfront and then we, we go to a construction bond amount. That allows us through planning to get more accurate cost estimates. So when we go to bond for something, we have, we're assured that our number is good. Andy, would you want to add anything in there?
Sure. Through the Chair. And then in regards to the bond debt reimbursement, the state bond debt reimbursement is tied to bonds that were passed prior to 2015. So anything that we put to the voters since then is not eligible for bond debt reimbursement. So we know the full cost to the voters when they're voting for it, except for I think the one that was in April of 2015 that they passed the law and then retroactively applied it to January 2015. So that one was maybe not quite in that ballpark, but other, all the other ones that have passed since then have been, you know, known that the, this, the city has to take full responsibility for those. For our FY '22 budget, we do have about $32 million built in for state debt reimbursement based on the current schedule for the bonds that were retired up through 2015 or issued through then. So, you know, going forward, I think the moratorium from the legislature for this bond debt reimbursement is out to 2025 now, I believe. So it'll be several years before we can, we might have the opportunity to vote on bonds that would have some sort of state reimbursement associated with them.
And the, the bonds that were passed prior to that time generally were a 40 or 30% share by the city and likewise a 60 to 70% share by the state. So that's the, the part that. part that they're reimbursing. I'm not sure. What further question?
That, that helps. I think it's, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that I can adequately explain this as we move closer toward setting the mill rate because we're looking at, I think it's $110 per 100,000 assessed value increase. And that's, that's going to be tough for a lot of folks, particularly in coming on the heels of a pandemic. So I just, you know, and I don't want that to necessarily temper attitudes towards future school district bonds. So I'm just trying to make sure I get all the information that I'm fully understanding it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Members Zalatell. Are there any other questions before we move on? All right. Not seeing any. Then those were the two big agenda topics for tonight. So we'll go ahead and move on in our agenda. So next, comprehensive plan. There are no items on that part of our agenda. So we'll move on to other matters of mutual concern. We'll go ahead and start with cell phones in school zones. And I believe this is a topic that was requested by Assemblymember Weddleton. Mr. Weddleton, Member Weddleton, did you want to speak to it before? I'm not sure who else is, is speaking to this item, but go ahead, Member Weddleton, if you could start us off. You know, I don't, actually, I'm not sure if Member Weddleton is with us on this side. I suspect he is not. Okay. So then is there anyone from the school district or the municipal administration who can speak to this?
Well, we were through the Chair Rivera. I just want to say that the, there was a, a bill passed at our state that has no cell phones in school zones. So we're happy to, about that. We had guests at the state level come and do a presentation at Bowman Elementary in regard to getting this passed. And I think a local resident there assisted with that. But other than that, we haven't utilized our school zones very much. Schools been open since January 19th and we'll continue to work with this. But certainly, supporting this at the state level as well as local level is, is a good thing.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And we'll, we'll go ahead and move on and hopefully we'll be able to hear from Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Weddleton, I, I texted you. So if you have anything you'd like on the record, please reply to that text and I will read it aloud. Okay. So next we'll move on to the hot lunch policy. This was, was a request by Assemblymember Constance. So if you want to go ahead and introduce it, and then I think the school district will be speaking to it.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just had a number of constituents reach out to me in fear for their children not being taken care of in a way that is kind of meeting their basic needs as we all hope we can do as best we can. So I was hoping for briefing on the topic so I can at least be educated when I speak with them.
Sure. Thank you. That's a great question. Through the chair to Member Constance. In planning for the secondary schools, what had come up in the School Start Task Force is having lunch at the secondary level. As you know, the CDC guidelines, eating and having masks off at that time was a concern. There were some roadblocks specifically to our high schools, primarily the spaces in which our cafeterias have been built and our schools built, has always been around an open campus concept in the city of Anchorage. So our actual spaces in our lunchrooms are not very large to house thousands of students to eat even over time. We generally have about 300 students in, in a lunchroom at a time. Adding that spacing distance for kids while they eat was just really a roadblock to, to problem solve around. So the secondary solved that issue with having space, spacing be allowed and available in classrooms. And students during the day will have several breaks, but there's a large 30-minute break in which they'll be able to have food. They can bring food from home. There'll be food available at the school, really snack type, you know, food, apples, yogurts, things like that, granola bars for them to eat. So students won't be hungry then. And then as students leave the buildings, they're leaving early, it's only a five and a half hour day, they will be able to take the lunches that we're serving now and they actually have food that can be heated up for later. They could take a cold pack, but similar to our food distribution presently that we're doing at all the schools, it is now a very large sack full of food as well as instructions for heating so that students can have a hot meal. And so as students leave, they'll be able to receive those lunches and take them home. Again, those were just some of the, the working throughs of, of having school in a pandemic and especially some of our concerns from our employees in regard to so many students with masks off in one place.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Is there any other discussion from Assemblymembers or school board members on this topic? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and move on. I'll, I'll go back to the item, Mr. Weddleton, Assemblymember Weddleton, I wanted to bring up regarding cell phones and school zones. And I believe the gist of it was, Assemblymember Weddleton just wanted to see what the school district's plan was to remind parents about the law currently on the books, especially as more parents and students are transitioning back to going in person to school.
Thank you, Chair Rivera, to Assemblymember Weddleton. We'll get back with you on our plan. I don't have any comments right now, but do have, of course, we have posters and things like that, that the city has designed, but we can discuss and, and I can get that information for you, how we have those posted and how we're communicating more than just our newsletters.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item under other matters of mutual concern. And that item is see joint work session on CDC guidance for schools. And this was just a open discussion I wanted to have with members of both bodies to see if there was any interest in having a joint work session for both of the bodies to go through the CDC guidance for schools, especially as I understand it, the school district is going to be primarily relying on said guidance. So wanted to see if there was any interest from either body in doing a joint work session or not. Less meetings is okay.
Chair Rivera, this is Margot.
Yes, go ahead.
So is the reason, is the purpose, because we're, I mean, we, we have worked really diligently to train and implement our mitigation plans. So what is the purpose of the, so we're going to go through the guidance of the CDC? Or are you wanting to go through the district's mitigation plans? I'm, I'm just trying to understand the purpose for the joint meeting?
Yeah, thank you. So just to be clear, this is a discussion on whether there should be a joint work session or not. So, so there, there is not currently a joint work session in, in the works. There's one, there is not one scheduled. And if there is no interest in having one, then there won't be one. So I just want to make that super clear. So the CDC School District Guidance has been something that has been of, a topic of interest at various assembly meetings recently and by individual assembly members. And so I, I proposed this as a discussion point to see if there was interest in reviewing how the school district was implementing the CDC school guidance. So, so I guess to reiterate, you know, if there, if there is no interest, which we don't have to belabor this, then we won't do the work session. And that is perfectly fine by me. I just, so it's a topic that gets, that was brought up, has been brought up frequently at recent assembly meetings.
Okay. All right. And I thank you for that, Chair Rivera. At this time, I don't, I, I don't think the district is interested, but I think we can leave that door open so that we can always come back if, if, if things have, if there are any changes or additional concerns.
Great. Thank you, Member Belli. All right. Then we'll go ahead and move on. So next on our agenda is schedule of upcoming joint meetings. So our next joint meeting is going to be on June 14th from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM and the school district will be hosting that meeting. So looking forward to that. So next we have member comments. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go down the line in my participants section and see what comments members may have. And the participants is just in alpha order. Before I do that though, I see that Assemblymember Constance is in the queue.
Yeah, no, going in order of your list is fine. I have two comments to make, so.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'll go in order of the list. So first I have a school board member, Bellini. Did you have any comments?
No, just a, just a simple thank you for making time for us today and for letting us give you the overview of our budget as well as our six-year capital improvement plan. And we look forward to further conversations. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Assemblymember Constance?
Thanks. As I said, two things. First, to Mr. Vekalis and to the operations staff of the district, I wanted to make very personal and robust thank you to you for operating your vaccination clinic at the ASD headquarters. I had the benefit of going through it and twice going through it, and it was incredibly efficient and clean and safe. And it's a huge opportunity for the community. So to you and those who led in that process, my biggest thanks. It's the thing that makes it possible for us to open the doors and get everyone back into the places where we want to be. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And then second, I believe this will be the last meeting for Ms. Marsette. And so I wanted to thank you as well for your service in our joint efforts to improve the lives of the students, the youth of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. I appreciate that.
Thank you. School Board Member Donley?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. I just want to thank the assembly for reaching out to the school board regarding the structure of the school board. Although we couldn't reach a consensus at this time, I'm going to continue to advocate for individual districts for the school board members. It's just such a daunting task to run citywide for a school, for the school board right now, that I think citizens, neighborhoods, and candidates themselves would be greatly served by having a parallel district organization to the assembly districts. It'd make it a lot simpler on citizens also to understand who their representatives are. Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblymember Dunbar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No comment this evening.
Thank you. Assemblymember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just want to say that, you know, how much I appreciate really what the Anchorage School District has been trying to do. I can't imagine how challenging and difficult so much of this is. And, and particularly, you know, it's kind of typical where you just can't make everybody happy. But I do think you still have your work cut out for you, just in terms of trying to kind of pick up the pieces, so to speak, with what the pandemic and, you know, and some of the municipal and state restrictions have done. So I don't envy your jobs at all. But, and also the fact that now you'll have possibly four new members coming on board as well. Anyway, with your, with the elections and that coming up, that will even create a few new, a couple new challenges for you, I suspect. But anyway, I just want to wish you well. I, I know how, how hard that work is sometimes. So I appreciate the fact that I know your hearts are all in the right place. And I just really thank you for, for all the, the effort that you are making. And, you know, and that goes to staff as well. And certainly, Dr. Bishop, to you and your, your top reports, because I know it's an endless, endless and sometimes thankless job. So anyway, thanks, thank you all.
Thank you. Before we go on, I just want to invite Assemblymembers or school board members who are on the public end to either put your comments in the chat and I will happily read them aloud, or feel free to text me if you can't access the chat and I will read your comments aloud. So next we have School Board Member Marsette.
Thank you, Chair Rivera. It is my last joint assembly meeting and I just wanted to say thank you. I know that sometimes we've agreed to disagree, but we all have our hearts in the right place. We want what's best for our kids and our community. And I just want to thank you for being a part of that and allowing me to be a part of that. And I will miss you all.
Thank you so much. Next we have Assemblymember Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to thank the school board for putting this budget together for us and, and all their work that they have done to prepare the schools so that we can get our students back in, in front of teachers and, and see if we can continue to educate these students and prepare them for life. But, and thank you.
Great. Thank you. And then next, Assemblymember Zalatell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, school board members and the school district for a great meeting. I find these meetings extremely educational and I always come with lots of questions. So I thank you for your time and patience in answering them. And I just wanted to say thank you, in particular, as a parent, navigating the return to school with an elementary age student has been very smooth. And she was just so thrilled to get back. So thank you for the diligence there and the time and effort I know that goes from at the building level, each individual staff member all the way up, that it's just, it's a, it was a Herculean effort, but one that's been well done. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any school board members or assembly members that I missed? I see that there's a comment from School Board Member Mitchell. I'll go ahead and read that aloud. Quote, "I appreciate the partnership and support of the Assembly for public schools in every way you can. I am also concerned about the loss of school bond debt reimbursement from our state legislature and the consequent impact on proper taxes. This is my last joint meeting and I have so enjoyed working with all of you. Thank you." End quote. Thank you, School Board Member Mitchell. Then from President Vekalis, quote, "Thank you for a good meeting. Look forward to continued conversation towards better education for the youth in our community." End quote. Thank you, President Vekalis. Are there any other comments before we move on? Okay, not seeing any, just a quick comment from me, just to echo a lot of what my colleagues on the assembly have stated. I do truly appreciate these times for us to go into a little bit more detail on some of the going ons of the school district and really appreciate the detailed responses from the school district administration and looking forward to our continued partnership and collaboration. So thanks to everyone. So we're going to go ahead and move on to final. So we're going to go ahead and move on to final audience participation. I'll turn it over to the clerk's office. Do we have anyone on the phone? I know we have Mr. Haberman. So I'm fine with us starting with Mr. Haberman and then whoever is next after him.
Chair, Mr. Haberman, you should be unmuted if you would like to go ahead and share.
Okay, you can hear me, you hear me?
Mr. Haberman, you're, you're a little bit soft. Can you speak up, please?
Can you hear me better? How about, how about now, can you hear me better?
That is a little bit better. Yeah, sorry, Mr. Haberman, we, we can't hear you. I'm not sure if there's anything that you can do on your end to help speak up or increase your volume so that we can hear you a little better.
Is that better now? Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, we can hear you better now.
Okay, okay. Technology, I know. Okay, let me, we start the timer. Okay. My name is Eugene Carl Haberman. I follow the public process. When the public process is unappropriately, decision made by the governing body is more likely a public interest. First to note, this is a joint meeting with two bodies, the School Board and the Assembly. And what happens at these meetings, you alternate who's the host. Today is the host of the Anchorage Assembly for this meeting. Now, the agenda, that for a normal Anchorage Assembly meeting, not the School Board joint meetings, you'll see a place in the beginning which directs the people to sign up for testimony, final or initial, whatever. And there's nothing to show it on this joint meeting. I went over to your Assembly meeting agendas and took the link there so I could sign up. So the public has been like, would be not properly directed so they couldn't sign up for initial or final for the way that agenda is set up for today. That's number one. There's a technology problem. I had to do audio to call in because the, the, the link that connects people to visually see you all, that wasn't working well, at least I couldn't get connected there. So I went to audio. And the, the next thing is to say is this, when you have your comments, what you're doing on your agenda, in the Anchorage Assembly meetings, you'll have comments after hearing from the public, not before. So when, when you close with public comments, when you close with audience participation, then your, then the result is you're not going to go back along the list of people on the School Board and Assembly and respond to what the public said. That's a concern because even the Anchorage Assembly has their comment after, after you hear from what we call final audience participation. And third thing, COVID issue is not over. I'm concerned about seeing the national stories where people are burning masks. I know one case where they burned masks in the Anchorage Assembly meeting a few weeks ago, which was totally out of line. I see businesses in Anchorage that are, are not listening to the mandate that says, yes, you can open, but you still need to be socially distanced and wear masks. And as recently as today, one business owner said to me, you don't have to wear a mask. And, you know, he, he's decided, well, this is what's going on and this is not, this is not. Remind you, the mask thing is being confused by people. In essence, they're confusing freedom with responsibility and it's far from over. And I'll just close with that because I'd like more people from the public to be heard. Thank you very much. Thank you, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman. Do we have anyone else for the phones?
No one who has signed up, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and then did we open the Q and A?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the Q and A has been opened and there have not been any comments made.
Okay. Got it, thank you. Thank you to Mr. Haberman for participating. Okay, so with that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Great, great, thank you. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.